The time, place, and venue of this zoning board of adjacent neighborhoods in New Brunswick has been set for the appropriate repair of the city of New Brunswick. The home of Tribune and Star Ledger has been filed with the City Clerk in place of appropriate bulletin boards to lodge the city call.
Did you want to give your proposal? Two members have walked in, or?
Sure. Let's do the people who are asking.
Yes.
Evelyn Ascona, Carla Castaneda.
Here.
Okay. Michael Belvin.
Here.
All right. Matt Bird. Okay.
All right. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to every public vote which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minute to the board's previous meeting.
All right. We have the resolution of memorialization for the approval of pre-existing non-conforming structure in use pursuant to NJ SA 4065D slash dash 68, 61 Yilden Street. Eligible voters are Michael Toblin, Carla Castaneda, Michael Belvin, Rafael Manzanars, John Zimmerman, and John Cox.
I'll make a motion to approve.
John Zimmerman?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah, sir.
Okay. All right. So, Michael Toblin?
Yes.
Carla Castaneda?
Yes.
Michael Belvin?
Yes.
Rafael Manzanars?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes.
Okay. What? You don't have the other one?
No, I have the other one. I didn't.
I got it. All right. The other one is for resolution approval approving preliminary and final site plan with DNC variances, 90 Bayard Group Urban Renewal LLC. And the eligible voters for that are the same six.
Michael Belvin?
I'll second.
All right. So, Michael Toblin?
Yes.
Carla Castaneda?
Yes.
Michael Belvin?
Yes.
Rafael Manzanars?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing? Hearings. Delio Doro LLC 200 Livingston Ave., Block 200, Block 2, ZB 2023, 02. Preliminary and final site plan application with C and D variances in order to construct a new four-story multifamily apartment building with total 22 units. Property is located at 200 Livingston Ave. in the 3-C dash 3A Community Worship District. Peter Lampert, Esquire. Before we go, any member of the board have any conflict with this application? Seeing none, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lampert appearing on the cap with the applicant. I presented the application in the summertime at the first hearing. As a result of discussions that took place at the first hearing, we decided to amend the plan because there were concerns from certain board members that maybe the building was a little too large and had too many units. So, we amended the plan. We came back in September, unfortunately. Fortunately for me, I was out of the country, but my associate presented the application that evening. I understand that at this juncture, all the testimony was completed. It is now time for a public comment, and I would like to make a summation after public comment.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. At this time, I'd like to open it to the public on this application. Anyone from the public have any questions or concerns with this application? Please come forward.
Thank you. I'm Roy Gotta with First Baptist Church. Property adjacent. Okay, sorry.
Please state your name, explain your last name for the record.
Roy Gotta, G-O-T-T-A.
Okay. Do you swear in front of the public?
I do.
You have five minutes.
Thank you. And we have major concerns about the parking and the number of units going in there. In previous testimony, they cited a survey that saying that based on cities with public transportation, the parking that's proposed is adequate. Well, I did a little bit of just quick research on not seeing the study. I have to assume they did cities like Boston, New York, Chicago, Philadelphia, Newark. With the exception of Newark, all of those cities have four million-plus people. Newark has 300,000. New Brunswick has 59,000. Radical difference. And all of the other cities mentioned not only have buses, but they have trains, you know, inner-city trains systems. New Brunswick does not, which means that and the concentration of housing in downtown New Brunswick versus where the concentration of housing in downtown these other cities is radically different. And I would think that the planning and zoning board, when they initiated the requirement that says that 52 spaces would be needed for 26 units, basically double the spaces per unit, they knew New Brunswick. They put it in there for a reason, and then to ask for variance for exactly half of that just seems crazy. I mean, we had a colleague coming with pictures of the parking situation that exists now, and it's brutal in that area with three schools, two churches. And with the proposed units, I know it's down to 22. I have a question. May I ask a question? How many of them are?
Ask all questions up to the.
I'm sorry. I'd like to know how many are one, are one-bedroom, and how many are two-bed? While he's checking that, I'll make another comment. They have a certain number of spaces designated as handicap and a certain number of electronic vehicle spaces. What are contingencies? Let's say if there are full occupancy, nobody has electric cars, or nobody's handicapped, or those spaces notice it vacant, putting more cars out onto the street.
To answer your question, there's 22 units. There are two threes, three bedrooms, two one-bedrooms, and the remainder are two bedrooms.
So, there's only two one-bedrooms?
That is correct.
So, in my mind, and I live in an area where there's a lot of apartments and houses that are rented, and I find that if you have two-bedroom, you have families with children. Three-bedroom, probably it's almost a given. Children require two cars. And there's just, in my mind, no way that 26 spaces are going to be adequate for 22 units, especially if only two of them are one-bedroom. If perhaps nine of them are one-bedroom, I might think better about it. But it just, it just seems unreasonable that we would approve something, there would just absolutely no way there'd be enough off-street parking to serve the needs of that building. Our other concern is with the sewers. You know, with all this rain, I mean, the other day, actually the day before the last meeting, the water was so deep on Hale Street that we were walking through ankle-deep water to get to our cars. Because the water, it's not the sewers on Comstock. It's, but the sewers in Comstock feed the ones on Lee, and when they back up, there's all kinds of sewer problems on our street. And they're going to take all the parking lot runoff, the roof runoff, put it into that manhole on Comstock Street, and it's just going to make the situation worse. So, those are our primary concerns. I mean, if they're going to keep the number of residential units up to 22, a heck of a lot more will have to be one-bedroom. And I think that about covers it.
Of course later.
So, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No good.
I apologize.
No problem.
So, thank you for letting me speak.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Laurie Carrington. I am interim pastor at Ebeneze Baptist Church, which is around. I'm sorry.
Please state your name, explain your last name for the record, and speak up for the microphone.
Okay. Last name is Carrington, C-A-R-R-I-N-G-T-O-N.
Okay. Do you swear in front of the public? And do you swear or affirm to the public?
I do.
Laura, do you have five minutes?
I, as a resident of that community, also, our church is there on the corner, but we also have a childcare center, which is on the corner of Lee and, Lee and, okay, up the street. Anyway, we have, parking is a real issue for us, not only for the church, but also during the week, for my staff that come in. So, I'm standing just in support of the issues that they've raised, the other, and also in standing in support of the issue regarding the sewer system. You're adding more units to an, to an area where there is already issues with our sewer system and with parking. So, I'm just standing on record in support of, I'm stating this as our First Baptist Church, our community, for our property. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name.
Colin Berkey, B-E-R-K-E-Y.
Do you swear in front of the public?
Thank you. Just had a general question. So, it seems that community response to this is pretty hesitant to let this be built because of, you know, or it's about parking, about sewage. Has there been sufficient community outcry or, you know, a call for more housing? Is this justified, building this besides reasons of profit? Or is it just, is it in interest to the community to have more places to live in the Brunswick area?
Thank you. Any other member of the public have any? Please state your name, spell your last name.
Espinoza, E-S-P-I-N-O-Z-A. I swear, I swear, and I affirm. So, I was here last month. So, for the benefit of the board members that were not here, I'm going to reread what I brought. I'm going to be speaking as a parishioner, as a board member from the church, and also as a teacher of New Brunswick. So, I would like to express my deep concern regarding the proposed development adjacent to the First Baptist Church of New Brunswick, a longstanding institution in our community for over 200 years. Just recently, in September, we were celebrating 217 years of the First Baptist Church, and then the Spanish congregation has around 75 years. We understand and appreciate the need for development that provides housing for many people, but we implore the zoning board to reconsider granting the variance that would allow for additional parking near the church. This variance is approved will significantly impact parishioners, particularly those who are elderly and attend our services on a regular basis. Our objection is not rooted in opposition to the progress of the development, but rather in the genuine concern of the well-being of those who worship and rely on the First Baptist Church of New Brunswick. The prospect of increased vehicle traffic in the vicinity would increase an undue burden in our community members, many of whom are seniors and have limited mobility. It is important to address the assertion that this development will not result in significant increase in the number of cars. In reality, it is unrealistic to assume that most families will only have one car. This is such and contradicts the everyday experiences of our parishioners and residents. Even myself, as I'm visiting, my girlfriend who lives in the area, I times have to go around and around looking for parking. And now, I'm going to be speaking as a teacher. I run to you as a teacher in the city of New Brunswick. I wish to express my strong opposition to the proposed development of the multi-story dwelling in the community. While we understand that we need housing, it is very hard to find parking in that area. And I'll just go on with what I know. We currently have Red Shaw School, next to it, you have Livingston School, and next to that, we have the Joe Synagogue, which houses the charter school. And we also have the acres in the back. During Monday through Friday, when the school is in session, it is really hard to find parking. And when they redid Livingston Avenue, we lost almost five or six parking spaces in front of Synagogue. So, add into all that, it's just going to be very hard and very impossible for our teachers, as myself, to go and find parking and get to school on a reasonable time. Even with the Board of Education providing parking spaces, we still have to park two and three blocks down. And imagine now when daylight savings comes, and it gets later quicker, and the staff are there grading or doing extra things, and they're leaving the school at such a time, it's going to be dark. Last month, when we were doing this, it was raining, and I left school, and it was raining. So, now, as a teacher, if I'm walking two or three extra blocks, and it's raining, it's going to make it even harder, or not harder, but uncomfortable and unnecessary for the teachers to walk that extra mile because of not being able to find parking at that time. Thank you for your time, and I strongly consider you, ask you to reconsider allowing this variance to pass as it would do unharmed, not only to the churches and the area, but also the, the schools where the teachers work, not to mention parent-teacher conferences, when parents are going to go meet with their teacher, it's going to make it very difficult and inconvenient for everyone. So, thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Okay. Another member of the public? Seeing none, we will close the public portion. Mr. Member.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'd like to go back. This project started in 2022. We submitted an application at that time for 28 units in a building of approximately 32,000-plus square feet. After discussion with township staff and TAC, we did reduce the number of units from 28 to 26, which was our original application, keeping the same footprint. After the first public meeting and listening to comments from the board, we again heard those comments, took them into consideration, and reduced the project one more time. And we reduced it to 22 units, and not only did we reduce the number of units, we reduced the square footage of the building from 32,500 square feet to 26,000 square feet. So, we reduced the building by over 6,000 square feet. We are also providing 26 onsite parking spaces. The handicap spaces are required by statute. Those are the, we can't construct less parking spaces if there are no handicapped people living in the facility because there may be handicapped visitors. The EV spaces are also required by statute. The fact that they're EV spaces does not necessarily mean that those spaces are reserved solely for EVs. They can be used by the residents. We are providing 26 parking spaces for 22 units. At the last hearing, you heard the testimony of Ms. Dolan, who is a traffic expert, traffic engineer, who has appeared before this board and the planning board in this municipality and numerous municipalities, give her opinion as to the adequacy of parking. And her conclusion, based on experience and studies, indicates that there is sufficient parking onsite to handle the 22 units. In addition, I've appeared before this board on numerous occasions, presenting applications very similar to this, and the board has routinely granted basically the same variance for parking spaces. Mr. Mercado, who is the applicant, owns a property further up on Livingston Avenue. He constructed that, and the parking ratio was basically one-to-one, and there are no parking problems. That's on Livingston Avenue by May Street. I've done other applications in other parts of the community, and again, that parking ratio seems to work. The gentleman from the church says there is no buses or trains. Livingston Avenue has a bus system. While it is not a hop step and a jump from here to the train station, but the train station is accessible for people who work in New York City, and they can either walk on nice days or Uber to the train station if they're going into New York City. They are not going to drive into downtown New Brunswick, park their car, and go into New York City. So, people who work in the city probably will only have one car. That parking ratio seems to work very well. The problem that the neighbors have raised, I understand, but the reality is the church has zero parking. They have no parking. And as a matter of fact, their parishioners use this site, now that it's not occupied, for their parking. And so, their loss is not necessarily going to be the street parking. Their loss is the parking on my client's property. It is, on a Sunday morning, inconceivable that we would clog up the streets so that there's no parking for the church. The church is going to be in the same situation after this project is built than it would be today, other than that they don't have the use of this property, which they're not entitled to use. The issue of the sewers is a city issue. It's not my client's problem, and I understand it's a problem. I'm not downplaying it, but basically, if there's a problem with the city sewer system, it has to be addressed. We have a stormwater management plan, which has been reviewed by the city engineer, and we've got to comply with it. We are going to make the situation there better, not worse, because that's what we're required to do by law. So, in looking at this, we have a situation where Livingston Avenue is changing. I grew up on Livingston Avenue. I lived there for many, many years. And when I grew up, it was single-family homes, and as you got closer to downtown New Brunswick, there were professional offices. The day of the little professional office is basically gone, and it's gotten worse since the pandemic. And I think Mr. O'Brien, who was at the last hearing, testified to that. So, this building, while it's an attractive building, and if somebody went into it, you could realize it needed a lot of work, is basically obsolete in this day and age. What we are proposing is a fair, is a very attractive building. I think the number of units works on that site. As a matter of fact, there are 20-some parking spaces on that site today. When the place operated as an office, I imagine during the day, years ago, when things were busier, they probably may not have had enough parking if people parked on the street. But based on the testimony of Ms. Dolan, based on experience of Mr. Mercado, we feel that the parking is adequate to handle this facility. We cannot solve the problems on the street. We cannot solve the problems of the church. But there is no evidence that indicates that we will make the situation worse. The other thing that, and I didn't hear, other than the church operates on Sunday. I've done probably 20 applications for churches around central Jersey. A lot of them are similar situations where there are parking problems. Those churches dealt with ride-sharing. Churches bought vans to take people to the churches so that they get their parishioners to them. Some of them, while it's not the ideal thing, have online church services. If they have a parking problem, it's not our job to solve it. But based on the testimony, we are not going to make the situation worse. I think what we are proposing is adequate for that site. It fits on that site, and I would respectfully request that the board grant the variances for the parking and the site plan approval. Thank you.
Board discussion? Any members of the board have anything to say?
Mr. Chairman, if I could before the board.
Yes.
Forgive the interruption. I just wanted to just review my notes with everyone because I, I know that we started this in July, and then we came back in September, and now we're here for October. So, just according to my notes, I just have written in here that the applicants agreed to everything in our planning report, you know, all the comments in there. I don't know what the engineer speak to.
They have agreed to our report as well.
I just wanted to get that clear because I don't, don't want that to be forgotten.
And just for the record, I mean, those are changes that need to be made for the plan, and they don't substantially alter what is on here. There are some, you know.
Right.
Signed comments and some drainage comments.
I just wanted to get, I agree with you. Thank you. I just wanted to get it clear that either you've addressed all of our comments, or you've agreed to make revisions for everything we asked for.
Absolutely correct, Mr. Black.
Thank you. The other thing I just wanted to, I'm sure the board knows this, but I, I think it's, it's a trend that we see a lot with the multifamily apartment buildings that we've seen in the past couple of years here, all over the city, is that the units, the residential units are going to be rented, whether it's a one-bedroom, or a two-bedroom, or a three-bedroom. But I think what has been the trend, and I don't expect it to be any different here, is that separate from the units being rented individually, the parking spaces are very likely to be assigned or leave, or one way or another, assigned to individual users, you know, apartment users. And some of them will take them, and some of them won't. And I think the reality of the situation that we've sort of discovered over time is that if an individual or a family wants to rent a unit in this apartment building, and they have one or two cars, and they come to the building, and no parking spaces are left, it's sort of a self-policing thing because they tend to just say, well, I can't rent here because I have two cars, and I need to put them here, so I just have to go somewhere else. So, I, I think when you limit the parking like this, we do have a tendency to sometimes overbuild a lot of extra parking, and that's what creates sort of extra traffic on the road. So, I do think you, we've seen this before, and I do think in this situation, it'll be the same, but we'll kind of get a self-policing thing, where if somebody has two cars, they're going to have to make a decision, either if they can put them here, or they're just going to have to go somewhere else.
Any board?
Can I make just, I'm sorry, I forgot one other thing. You also think we, we did provide is an area for bicycles. So that, again, sometimes a family may have a car, and they may have a bicycle, so that one of the family members, if they're going somewhere, can use the bicycle. So, and, and that is pretty prevalent now in the city. So, that is something that did not happen 10 years ago or 15 years ago, but that is something that we've provided so that people coming to this facility, if they want to rent, know that they have the ability to bring their bike, lock it safely, protect it, and can use it if they need to go somewhere where they don't need a car. And that, again, basically helps to minimize the number of cars onsite.
Board discussion? Board members? Got any questions or comments?
I still feel the same way I felt last time. I think that parking is going to be a problem. I don't trust all the testimony that I've heard, and, yeah, I just, I feel the same way as I did last time.
Well, I think the applicant has, you know, raised, or actually lowered the amount of units that we asked him to do. He's done above and beyond that, the first two applications that he came with, he's gone above and beyond to help lower the, the volume of this application. And I believe that Mr. Lampert does have a point, but you have 26 parking spaces, and you're not going to, you know, if they're paid, are they going to be a paid parking spot, or does that include, is it a first-come, first-served?
It will, it will be an assigned parking spot, and will be included in, in the rent. It'll be a little bit higher rent, so.
So, they'll actually pay more for the spot?
Yes.
Okay. So, that might deter some people from having, you know, a lot of cars or any cars at all. And I know a lot of New Brunswick residents do walk and commute using public transportation, so I don't think that it's going to be as big as an issue as some people think it might be. So, I'm in favor. Any other board comments?
I live in the area, and parking is a problem right now. It's, if I get home from work, I'd say, like, I'm going to get home from this tonight, and I'm going to have no place to park on my block. I'm going to have to go around. You know, and that is the reality of city living at this point. I mean, I did, you know, based on what, you know, the recording from, from last month, and I see that, you know, your firm has tried really hard to comply with as many as of, and address a lot of the concerns that, that we've had. I mean, you know, I understand it's, it's sort of a double-edged sword, because I can see the value in having it. I do have one question. If this goes through.
Guys, questions are done? Questions were supposed to be asked before.
Oh, I apologize. Okay. Well, okay, so then I will.
Before we went into board discussion, the questions were pretty much.
Agreed. Okay. My apologies. And I will ask you after, after the meeting, if that's okay. But, yeah, I just wanted to say, to say that, you know, it's, it is a concern, and, and I understand where everybody's coming from. But again, I, I do see the value in, in having it. I understand where everybody's coming from. But again, I do see the value in having more parking. So.
I can agree with you on that because I live in that area as well, and parking is a really big issue. And yeah, we can agree with you. So.
Anyone else on the board? Seeing none, we close. Dan?
Yep.
Conditions?
Sure. So should the board act favorably, the following conditions shall apply. Compliance with the terms of the city engineering report dated 9/21/2023. Project submission of all necessary easements and a process agreement to review and approve by the board attorney and city engineer prior to filing of same. Payment of a site maintenance bond in an amount reviewed and approved by the city engineer. Submission of site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees in an amount calculated pursuant to Title 16.24.160. Payment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Titles 13.04 and 13.08. Issuance of a road opening permit from the city engineer if required. Compliance with the terms of the Fignell report dated, sorry, September 19, 2023, for the above project. Payment, no, that's applicable. Mandatory monetary contribution to the city's tree preservation trust fund in the amount required by Title 8.48. Planning with U.S. growth fund for all anticipated postapproval reviews. Payment of any other fees due to the city in New Brunswick related to development or use of this project. Payment of all outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees. Middlesex County Planning Board approval or waiver. DNR canal commission approval or waiver for whole soil conservation district approval or waiver. Submit engineering site plan to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. Submit architectural plans to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. Execution of a Title 39 parking enforcement agreement. All utilities and other site improvements to be maintained by the applicant at their sole expense. All onsite utilities to be constructed underground. All temporary approaches into the public right-of-way shall require city council approval. All construction staging shall be done on site unless an encroachment allowing into the public right-of-way is approved by city council. Streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicant shall cause the streets to be cleaned if directed to do so by the Director of Public Works. Trunk and pad shall be installed at all construction exits. Replacement of damaged streets, curbs, and sidewalks as per direction of city engineer. Schedule a pre-construction meeting with city engineering department. Variances for de-variances. We have a D1 use variance and a D4 FAR variance, a building coverage variance, and a parking variance. Wade, design waivers for foundation plannings and curb setbacks for property line, and the payment in lieu of parking required for the parking shortfall. Are there any conditions or waivers that anybody can flag that I missed?
Did we talk about parking permits? Did you have that one?
I believe that it was discussed, but I think Mr. Lempert wasn't, maybe should be asked if they would be amenable to, even the zone doesn't have, I think, permit parking, so it would be subject to it becoming permit parking in the future if there was a restriction. But I can't speak for that.
Right, okay. Just a quick question. If residential permit parking came into that area, would you be willing to forego the parking permit to that building?
Based on the concerns of the people who spoke this evening, we would not be seeking any parking permits to park on the street, so we will waive any claim for any parking permits. And again, we feel we can handle our parking on site.
Thank you.
Parking permit waiver.
Correct. That's it?
That was it?
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
All right.
I'll second it.
So that was Michael Toblin and John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Dejira Torres?
Yes.
Michael Toblin?
Yes.
Carla Castaneda?
It's going to unfortunately be a no for me. I appreciate all the testimony. I understand all the points of view, but I just, I don't agree with the parking situation either for the location. I think it's a lovely idea. Wrong location.
Michael Belvin?
Yes.
Rafael Enzinaras?
No.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes.
All right. That's five-two. Application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.